I'm going to turn on the recording.
No.
Go ahead.
Yes.
And for the pledge?
Pledge?
Well, pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Please remove your hats. Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
I would like to call the October 21st meeting to order.
Make sure you speak loudly, just because we're, we've got a new audio here.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
And take attendance, Jim Scully.
Here.
Jim Schufel.
Present.
Jeff York.
Present.
Tony Dickinson, President. I will be acting as Chair tonight. Peter Kehoe is absent.
The next, we were going to approve the minute, the meeting minutes of the last month. However, I did find a couple of small errors in them, so we're going to have them moved on, and we will vote on them next month. And with only four members present tonight, we still will need three votes to approve or deny any motion. First on our agenda is PL PB 2025-0040 at 1819 Fifth Avenue.
Lindsay, why don't you come up here?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
I gotta go in a minute.
Okay, we're just doing 1819 right now.
Hello, everyone. This is our second time in front of the board. I believe at the last meeting, this matter was tabled pending the zoning board's approval of an area variance, which we did obtain at the October meeting of the zoning board. So at this stage, we are hoping to receive approval for the subdivision. Yes, we submitted an easement, a draft easement for review, as well as documentation reflecting that the wall between the two buildings was fire rated.
Okay.
Someone raised a objection to the easement agreement. Is it, you're understanding that Building Two, which is the commercial building, right?
Yes.
Right? Will be responsible for maintaining the driveway? Is that, is that what the easement agreement says?
Yeah.
I mean, you can make any arrangement you want. I just wonder if someone pointed that out.
Yeah, they're responsible for maintenance. If they don't keep the maintenance, then the owner of Lot One has the ability to do so at the owner of Lot Two's expense.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Yeah, no other questions. Anybody on the board like to ask anything?
Sorry, guys, I need you to project your voices.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have a telephone that's central to the table, so we want to just make sure everybody's heard.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
No.
No?
No questions.
Okay, is there anybody that'll open this to the public? Does anybody have any comments?
Hi, everybody, Stephen Maples. I've sent me some comments in. I think it's very cut and dry that this is not appropriate, this proposal does not meet the criteria for a subdivision. I think it's pretty straightforward, pretty cut and dry, it does not meet the purpose, it does not meet the criteria. And I think that the only logical action today is to not approve it. Thanks so much.
Okay, is there anybody on Zoom?
Oh.
No, okay. So, may I get a motion for final approval?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move this toward final approval.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? The pass? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, if you want to bring in the press, I will get those signatures.
Thank you.
I am going to take the next one out of order. I'd like to go to PL PB 2025-0054 for Senator 79 Brunswick Road. Is there anyone here to speak on this proposal?
Sorry, I was a little bit vague.
That's okay.
I'm here to represent 79 Brunswick.
Yeah. We're coming up here.
State your name.
I'm Neil Pallone. I'm an architect, working with the owners of the Aldine, IFC's cemetery. My client's looking to demolish an existing house that was used as a caretaker in the storage building. And that's their area. They're hoping to, I had this done a few months ago.
Yeah, could you, I'm sorry, could you project?
Yep. So we're, they're hoping to remove an old building that's no longer in service. We've seen, oh, there we go. Put this house here. They've provided a post demolition property condition assessment, which I can either read into the record, or if you guys are familiar with this project. Essentially, they don't need the building. It's becoming a nuisance since it's vacant. They'd like permission to take it down.
All right, does anybody on the board have any questions?
Will we, will you be using this parcel for grave sites?
Uh, not to my knowledge. They're, they're leaving the pavement. There is circulation close to the building site. You can't really see it in the photo, but there's a loop down there. So that, that house technically sits on a little side parcel, and then there's 57 acres nearly adjacent to it. There's, there's no plans to develop that site.
So you're just going to demolish it, fill it in, and seed it, from what I understand?
Yep.
How old, how old is this one?
Four, 1940s, I believe, is what they said. It's not quite old enough to be interesting.
Richard Halli.
So, may I, is anybody in the audience would like to speak on, on this? Okay, hearing none? Anybody on Zoom? No, okay. Well, let's continue. Can I get a motion to declare this proposal as unlisted under secret?
I'd like to make a motion to declare it unlisted under secret.
A second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Next, I'd like to make a motion to declare a negative declaration under secret.
I think we just said right.
You just said it was unlisted.
Oh, we said it was unlisted.
Unlisted, and then we do a negative, um, did I say?
No, you're right, you're right.
Negative declaration under secret. Would you like a second?
Yeah, I'd like to, oh, you made a motion.
I made a motion.
Second motion.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed? Okay. So, um, I would like to make a motion to declare this application as complete, and set a hearing for next month, if that's...
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to declare this application as complete.
A second.
Okay. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
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 Any negatives? All right, so will the applicant be ready for the public hearing for next month on November 18th?
Uh, we're ready now.
You will, you have to be two meetings.
Seriously?
Yes, it has to be a meeting and then a public hearing. So those are our rules.
Okay.
So then, I will make a motion to have this brought before us on November 18th for public hearing.
A second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Pass. We'll see you next month.
What's the date next month?
November 18th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, next, I'd like to bring up PL PC 2024-0019, Eddie's Lane Residential Development. Is there anyone here to speak on this proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have your name and position, please?
Sure. I'm Nick Costa. I'm with Advanced Engineering and Surveying, and we prepare the documents that have been submitted to the zoning board, the consideration of the development of this almost 11-acre parcel located off of Oakwood Avenue. Go bring it up in a second, and...
Which one is it?
Bring in the aerial, so we can see a global view of the parcel. Thank you. So, as you can see, it's a odd-shaped lot. There's Eddie, there's, if you don't mind walking up here, there's Oakwood Avenue, that runs right here, and then Eddie Lane comes down. Freeer Park is over, over here, and the Martin Luther King Apartments are just west of this parcel. So what the applicant is proposing here, DF acquisitions too, is to build a road and nine buildings with eight apartments in each one of those, for 72 units. And along with the roadway, there'll be all the infrastructure to provide municipal city water, city sanitary sewer. And there is a trail that is being proposed. Just short. Sometimes they don't.
I can point it out, will you?
No, I, I can, thanks, Eric. But that's a, that's a trail system. So there's been a substantial amount of documentation that's been submitted, all the site drawings, the EAF, a project narrative, a geotechnical report, uh, no, uh, stormwater sweat, uh, has been done on this. So it's pretty far along as far as the, the development of, of the parcel. It, it will, Eric, can we go to the site? I am. It's a random right there. So this, this shows all the topography on the site. You can see there is, there are areas of the site that are fairly steep, especially towards the north of the parcel. Those dark lines are, they're two-foot contours. There is a drainage soil that drains from Freeer Park across Oakwood, discharges and goes down, keeps going down, you know, through, through the Martin Luther Apartments and down to the river. So, you know, this is a fairly steep area. I think the, the nature trail would be very nice in here. This is heavily wooded forested area that has some substantial trees and, and walking through there will be, you know, very, very nice. There are paths and trails, you know, that, uh, would be a nice activity. The roadway, along the roadway, there'll be, it'll be very similar to a city street. There'll be parking on each side of the, of the, of the road, parallel parking, and then there, there is a parking lot right in that area, right there where the residents will be able to, to park. There was a T, TDMP done for this, so there's, there's several, pretty much all the, all the work has been done. I do want to clarify some items from the staff report. I did speak with the applicant. They, they will not turn the road over to the city. It will be a private road. And also, because the TDMP recommended to have a, an auxiliary lot, they're going to keep that parcel. So, uh, in the future, if they need to develop that parking lot, they, they won't have to come to the city and, and deal with the city to gain the parking that's shown in, in dash, in dash lines right there.
So can you, can you repeat that again for me, and last? So that parcel is owned by your...
Yes.
Already now?
Yes. Yeah, they, they're, they're under contract to buy both.
Okay, and that's an existing lot on the left? Okay.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's owned by the same entity that owns the, the lot where we're showing the development. And they were gonna, they were gonna donate to, that to the city, but instead of donating to the city, they're gonna keep it because of that potential need to have to add parking.
So you're, when you say add parking for future development?
No, for future, i- i- if, if the, if the development finds that they don't have sufficient parking, they, they would, they would develop sufficient parking.
Okay, I see where you're going. Okay.
So how many spots do you have going around that circle?
I, I think it's 70, 76, I believe, is it?
76.
So, submission for...
It, it's...
Seventy-two apart.
The TDMP presents that, and, and that is sufficient. I think that it says it needs 72 or 74, right, Eric?
There's at least one parking stall per unit.
Right, there's at least one parking stall per unit. But the, the TDMP also says that there is an auxiliary parking lot if necessary, that they find that they need more parking, they, they can develop that parking.
You had mentioned that there are nine buildings. Aren't there just eight buildings?
Uh, sorry.
I think your first proposal last year was nine buildings.
No, I think it was even more than that. I, I think we had 11 buildings, because it was 90-some units.
Oh, okay. Down to 72, you understand?
Yes. And they're all the same size. Last year, when we initially presented, it was some four units and some six units. Now they're all eight.
No, I think...
Eight and 10.
I think there's four 10, according to the latest proposal, I saw there were four 10 units, four times 10.
Yes, that, that's correct, because there's a, there's basement units too, that, I'm sorry, that, the, the units on the forever, the, right there, that, they're, they're basement, there's, there's basement units on those, because they, the, the grade drops.
So that's all, every perimeter building?
No, no, just those, those three.
Those?
Yes.
Those three?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Now these will all be rented?
Yes, they'll be all rentals, apartments.
Apartment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, will you have an HOA, or is this all going to be taken care of by your prop?
Yeah, by the property owners. You know, they, they, it's a, it's a typical apartment complex where they, they take care of all the maintenance and the streets and the...
Cell?
Waste.
Lawn?
Yeah.
All that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Are they not supposed to dedicate?
No. That, that's, I'm sorry, you weren't here. I, I retracted that from the project narrative.
And will these all be market break?
Market break, yes. And, Eric, if you don't mind going to the apartment units, the architecturals. Let's bring up the, there's two different types. There's one for the basement and one for the basement.
What about?
It's above.
On the other side of?
Mark was a change down.
So, these are floor plans of the units, the first and second floor. If you scroll, there's the elevations and some renderings of the, of the buildings.
So all of your apartments are two bedrooms and one bedroom, correct?
That's correct.
I like the design.
Thank you. So if there are any questions?
Board members have any questions? No? That is good. Okay. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this proposal? Anybody on Zoom?
Oh.
That's us. You're much more handsome on television.
It's good to have the meeting here.
Okay. May I get a motion to declare our intent to act as lead agency?
I'd love to declare us as lead agency.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Questions passed. Okay. May I get a motion to declare this as a type-one action under secret?
Re-referenced. We noted that it was a type-one action, because it's an unlisted action that's substantially contiguous to a historic structure and exceeds 25% of a type-one threshold, meaning that they have 50, like, units. The type-one threshold is 200. That is why it's a type-one.
I'd like to make a motion to declare it type-one, uh, action under secret.
I second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Questions passed? So I, I, do I understand that Nick has a copy of our staff's...
Yes.
...review and report?
Yep.
So hopefully, the next meeting, we can come up with lots of answers and...
Yes.
Whatever we need. So... Does the board feel that this application could be complete?
I'd like to make a motion to declare the application complete.
I second the motion.
Any in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Jeffrey, did you vote?
Yeah, aye, sorry.
Aye. Are there variances that are going to be sought as far as projects?
Uh, that, that, there's a couple of measurements.
Yes.
I was checking for that scale, and I couldn't, couldn't find it.
It's on the title.
Okay.
One is 40.
So what is, what is the distance between the parking lot's closest edge to Eddie's place?
Yeah, I, I know, I put the scale on it.
I think that was the only variance that I had noticed might be needed. They might be needed.
But I'll check that out.
Okay, so I drove down there tonight before I came, so as I'm driving down, there's a, there was an empty space that was kind of lots of dirt and everything. Is that where the parking area would be?
Yeah, on the left-hand side. As you drive down that Eddie Lane, that would be where the parking, the auxiliary parking would be. On the right-hand side, before it starts getting steep, there's already an existing drive. You know, you can actually drive in there. That's going to be the drive going into the, into the site.
So your plan right now is to leave that parking area of this application?
Yes, a- a- and we understand that we'll probably have to come back and get a special use permit.
And a variance, you're saying? Well, he doesn't need a variance for the side that is...
Well, the part, with, with respect, since the parking lot's not necessarily the, the focus of this proposal, the variance I was referring to was the parking lot area that's actually part of the development.
Oh, okay.
And its proximity to Eddie's Lane.
Yeah, there's, there's 10 parking spaces...
Gotcha.
...that are shown before the first building starts on the outer loop, and those, those parking spaces may be close to that 30-foot step back.
Yeah, but that's all part of this application?
Yes.
So we're not, not mixing apples and oranges or something?
Correct. So I, I gave Nick and you're aware, if they choose to install auxiliary parking, then they would have to come back for a site plan idea. And I would also just maybe echo a little bit of caution that there should be some pedestrian connectivity, should that ever...
Yes, that's correct. Well, we're, we're bringing the sidewalk all the way out to Oakwood Avenue, so, you know, we, we would just need a crosswalk...
Right.
...to, and then a walkway to the parking lot. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Is there a waiting?
So we've, we've got a 30-day waiting period. The notices have to go out for intent to act as lead agency.
Oh, right, right, right.
So I don't know if, it might be two months hence.
Right, so we're, we're...
And if they, if they, if they need an area variance, they may have to go to the zoning board.
Correct. The closest you might be able to schedule a hearing would be December.
I would schedule it tentatively for December, and if they need a variance, then you can direct them according to this.
Oh, I shouldn't have that answer by, by this week.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we got 30 days, so, right?
Right, but if we schedule the hearing in December...
Right, that's right, okay. I'd like to make a motion to, to schedule a public hearing in December, third Tuesday in December for this application. Is that right?
Oh, I thought you said the 16th, sorry about that.
No one wants to go. Sorry, I'm the 23rd.
It might be in your favor.
Well, we marry.
I think the cemetery would be in their favor, for sure.
All right, a second.
What was that thing?
December or 16th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Questions passed?
Thank you.
So we will see you in...
December.
December?
December, yep.
Um, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Are you going to be allowing, allowing animals in your building? Do you know that yet?
I don't know that. I'll, I'll find out, though, whether pets are allowed or not.
Yeah, because that would also have to be part of a site plan, I think, as far as things that we need. Okay.
I, I think there, I think there may be, because I, I think at one point, we might have a block park.
Oh, that's, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I'll check and find out.
I think, yeah.
More.
More, more of that, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you want to go, Steve?
Sure.
Think about our continuing professional education for the end of the year, right?
Mm-hmm. I'm only, I'm only one hour, I'm only one hour short.
You've already done it?
Last year I did. This year, I'm only short one, I think.
Last year, yeah.
Schedule that one time last year where we did a bunch of...
Yeah, all of them last year. I thought it was annual.
Yeah.
It's an annual requirement. I think you can carry over, though.
You can carry over.
Four or something like that. Okay.
Will, will they be...
I haven't looked at it in a while.
But will they be sending out, or send out what we, we can sign up for, like they did last year? No, yeah?
Don't know. Question for Eric.
Tell Eric after the meeting.
Maybe Eric should tell us.
What's the question?
They're talking about continuing education.
Guess last year, there was a notice of some sort that was sent out about available courses, or maybe Randy did it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can get that.
Cool.
Okay. All right. So the next item on our, on our agenda is PL PB 2025-0056, 417 through 425, River Street, Brown's Brulee. Okay, all right, so, the next item on our agenda is PL PB two zero two five dash zero zero five six, uh, four seventeen through four twenty-five, River Street, Browns Brewing. Did you speak on the proposal?
He looks just like Gary Brown. Well, there's Gary. What's up with that? Tricking us, trying to trick us.
Like, Gary?
Yeah.
What's your name?
My name's Jack Byer, I'm an architect with Goldstone Architecture, I'm here with my colleagues Jeff Goldstone, Tim Severance, and Mr. Gary Brown, the owner of the Browns Brewing and Rev Hall establishments. And we're here to talk about, uh, our, a plan for a multi-phased, um, project that involves both buildings. And, that's a little bit difficult to see on the screen there, but, um, this is a site plan of the rear of the two parcels, um, showing, you know, the, the improvements, um, planned for the, for this, um, for the building at the grade level.
Without the elevation?
Probably, yeah, uh, or the, the renderings, um, you know, we can start, can start with, with that and, you know, go from there. So, looking at the, the riverside, oof. Tip over here.
Yeah.
The riverside of, of the complex there, we're looking at, um, removals of four phases of the project. First phase to start in the spring is essentially the removal and replacement and expansion of all the outdoor dining areas, um, related to the two business establishments, Browns Brewing and, um, Rev Hall. Um, what you're looking at here is, is what would be the completion at the, at the end of the fourth phase, but the second phase would, would include that, that central, um, entrance tower addition to the building, which is like a glass-enclosed space there, three stories. Um, and then, if you look above that, uh, little, um, bump out is also in addition to the building, and that's to provide, um, we'll be putting in a new elevator to, to access all the floors of the building. Um, and that little connector building is going to provide access from the elevator to a fourth-floor dining establishment, which is an existing rooftop, um, deck area, which is all the way to the upper right there below the sign. So, there'll be a partial, um, development of the fourth floor for, um, an oyster bar, you know, dining and, and, um, entertainment establishment there. Um, and then, the third phase is mostly all interior, which is going to be development of a new commercial ki- kitchen over the facility on the, um, lowest level of the building, and some interior renovations to take advantage of, um, the moving of the kitchen with some additional dining area. And the fourth phase, uh, is going to be the development of the upper three floors of the building, which are currently unoccupied spaces, and those will be developed into residential apartment units. Eleven units planned for that area. Um, so, four phases, hope to, you know, start first phase in spring. Um, we're, you know, in the process of developing the, you know, full construction documents for all that work, um, and, uh, yeah.
So, does this application cover all four phases?
Yeah, the, the, the goal is to try to, you know, we're trying to represent what's gonna be completed at, at the completion of the four phases, so that, you know, the, the ownership can move, you know, year by year, from one phase to the next, with the goal of completing, you know, all four phases within a, you know, four- or five-year period. And so, we're hoping that this would cover that full, um, full scope of the, of the work, yeah. Maybe look at the, the renderings, it's a little bit easier to kind of see, um, you know, what, what it's gonna look like from, from the renderings. The, the, the goal is really, um, you know, both, what's there now is, is deteriorating and, um, you know, there's a lot of issues with water penetration through the decks and, and, um, deteriorating the steel structure, so all that's, you know, kind of at the end of its life, gotta be removed and be replaced, but, you know, in addition to sort of replacing what's there, it's just an expansion to, to provide some more dining space. And, um, you know, create a, a much, um, more, uh, distinct entrance from the riverside, uh, so that, uh, people who are looking for the facility know where to go and, um, can safely, you know, access the, the building. We have, um, developed a sort of a, a pedestrian walkway along the back that's sort of tucked underneath, tucked underneath the, the balconies and protecting, uh, you know, people who are trying to access the building with some heavy-duty con- concrete, uh, planters. So, you know, really, with a change in, 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 uh, in, um, paving application, you know, creating a sense of a walkway to the, to the facility that's, you know, more protected and, and more, you know, direct. Um, and then, from that point, accessing to the, to the interior of the building, we have a, a covered walkway that goes up steps to the first level and directly, um, into the facility undercover, so, you know, rain and snow, things, you know, it's more safer access to the building and egress, obviously.
So, that'll be the entrance to the apartments in the future as well?
So, there, there are, um, there would be multiple entrances to the apartments, there's, there will be two, um, stair towers that are existing that will service, serve as access, as well as the elevator to the, um, residential units. And there are, there are two points of access to those stair towers from the front of the building, and then, there would be one, uh, additional, uh, accessible entrance from the rear of the building, which would be near the, the decks to the elevator access. Yeah, so, yeah, actually, if you go back to the floor plans. Yeah, right here, so, this is actually gonna be, to be a walkway back to, uh, a, a wall here where there's an elevator, excuse me, a, a door.
Uh, if you go to the, the lower floor.
Where am I on?
That's, that's the first floor, you need to go to the ground floor on the site plan.
Ground floor, the site plan, site plan, sorry, go to the site plan, sorry. Yeah, right here, okay, so, right here, so, yeah, you can, uh, go basically under the deck through a secure gate, back to the, what would be the new addition, this three, three-story tower building, into an entrance lobby, and get into the elevator from there to go up to the, you know, any of the floors. So, that would be accessible entrance for both, for the business establishments, as well as the residential units.
That is going to end up being where, there's a deck there now, the staircase goes up to it, and that connects to the other old deck, and then, also, this is now gonna connect to decks to the north as well?
Uh, go to the.
Is that what it looks like?
So, this is all grade level, but at the first-floor level, so you come up the stairs from that entrance, sort of walking underneath?
Yeah.
The first-floor deck, up the stair, and straight into the building here.
Right.
This is all covered, this is a, a roof area over this, um, pergola structure, so you have a covered entrance into the building.
And that's a new deck to the north, correct?
This is.
That is, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And that'll, that has, there's, is that over a city easement, or would that be a city easement?
Yeah, yes, this.
It would be.
Yeah.
That's an existing easement.
There's an existing easement.
Yeah, yeah, for both four seventeen and, uh, four twenty-one through four twenty-five, yeah.
Are there any utilities under there?
Do you have, uh, language for the easement?
Uh, we have them indicated on the site plan.
I understand it's indicated, I mean, you have the deed, the deeds which contain the easement.
Can you go to the survey drawing at the end, what we have is surveys from, um, yeah, these two, um, property surveys.
Do the surveys contain deed and page references?
Uh, I don't know.
Page references?
I don't think so, 'cause they like reference old surveys, so, yeah, we'd like to see, like, the actual easement.
We, we need to see the deed.
But, you know, any utilities under there?
Uh, that, well, that'd be another question, too, we're gonna have to check with, do you, are you aware of any utilities under there?
The utilities that, that serve the building, yeah. Yeah, so, there's a sewer, there's two sewer lines that exit out the, the rear of the building that will, will have to be, um.
Any larger city infrastructure, I mean, sometimes water mains are behind these buildings, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware.
Not that we're aware of at the moment, no.
That's what Andrew Golden had mentioned as well, but we could double check with him.
Pretty sure.
Andrew's not aware of any, and that you know?
Not aware of any.
Hey, you guys, uh, you guys use a lot of water and sewer now, but we're gonna double that almost, right? Is that, is that what we're looking to do? I have everything, all four phases go, you got nineteen apartments, thirty people.
Eleven apartments, nineteen bedrooms. Eleven apartments with nineteen bedrooms.
Oh, I ca- okay, all right.
Are you making any additional provision for parking, or?
No.
Are you losing any parking spaces?
No.
No.
And how many decks, how many, how many levels is, are the deck, kind of the rear deck?
Well, depends on what you call a level, but, um, I mean, this is really all the first-floor level, even though there's a, an adjustment on this portion, the north portion here.
So, it's like where the existing deck is?
This is where the existing deck is, exactly, yeah. In this portion here, and this was raised up in order to be able to provide truck access for deliveries to the, to the kitchen underneath, and then, there's a, a new balcony, or, you know, dining deck off the second floor, and then, this is an existing roof that would be developed into a dining area.
Oh, okay.
And then, this is also an existing roof that would be developed into a dining deck.
Will those be covered?
No.
Upper ones?
No, just with, um, awnings, you know, retractable awnings. There's wood, right? Height underneath the deck?
Don't reme- I don't remember offhand, no.
That's up in a measurement you could get.
Absolutely.
Of course, yeah, thank you, yeah.
So, is, is the height of the new first-floor deck the same height as the exist- okay.
Correct, yeah.
So, you guys get trucks under there now, right?
Not, not a full truck.
No, yeah, or you can get a car under there.
Now, on the farthest north building, do I see some activity there, too?
This is all existing.
Yeah, so, that's where, uh.
The mall room, yeah.
Mall room is, yeah, that's all existing and staying to remain as is.
Cool.
How, uh, how tall is the building from, from the backside, ground, ground level or grade?
It's like, uh, seventy feet, I think-ish, I think it's just under seventy feet, I could get you a more specific, um, the reason I'm remembering that, something about, um, building codes that was a limitation, that I knew we were under the requirement for. Yeah, the elevator, yes, I think it's, I'm remembering seventy-ish, but I can get you a specific.
The elevator, sorry, just typing in, the elevator actually does not travel to the highest floor, so we have, we don't have any, uh, penthouse proposed on top, and the second-to-highest floor would connect within double-height units, uh, with the top floor.
These two floors would be double-height residential units, so the elevator only goes to the fourth floor, not to the fifth floor, and so, the, it, instead of having a penthouse up on the roof, the penthouse is on the fifth floor, basically, for the elevator.
One more thing, I think Jack didn't mention, what the elevator does, makes the entire building accessible, despite the fact that buildings, the two buildings, the two masses are at different elevations, so the elevator has doors at each of those elevations, um, it's kind of complicated, but they're all accessible now from.
Also, you're, you're four stories, or five stories, wait, six stories, five stories in the back?
Six in the back, five in the front.
Five in the front, right?
Yeah, I mean.
So, the streetscape is the same height as the first-floor deck.
Exactly, yeah, we, we, we call that one first floor and the, and the lower-level basement.
Ground floor, yeah.
Or ground floor, so we call it ground, ground one, two, three, four, and five, yeah.
And four seventeen is four stories, the other building is five stories.
And they're not aligned.
Right.
So, that was the complication with the elevator, having a lot of stops to get to all the different floor levels. Finding the right location for it, so it's within the interior of the existing building, but it does, um, make all the floors accessible.
Whereabouts are your, uh, staircases located?
You want to go to the floor plans? Uh, we don't.
They don't show on, uh, on those, um, I do have, you need, you want the PDF or the physical?
Of the, um, paving drawings, I can show you on the, the, there's one on the, basically, uh, four seventeen, you know, as soon as you enter the, the facility, there's a, there's a stair there, and then, on four twenty-five, there's one in the corner. So.
These, these are phasing plans we developed, they're not, they're not construction documents, they should be for phasing, and all of these, happy to review with you.
Basically, first floor is, ground first floor, so first floor, so, here are the entrances to four seventeen, to the restaurant side, and there's a stair directly in front of you there, and so, that stair goes up to the fourth floor, which is four floors of this building, and then, there's a stair, uh, we go, enter the building on this side, four twenty-five entrance, there's also a stair directly in front of you there, and that one goes all the way up to the five floors. And those would need to be made, um, you know, fire-rated for, uh, eh, for protected egress from the residential units, but they do, they do.
There's only, and there's only one egress from the fifth floor?
No, there'd be two, there's two egresses from every floor. The, the, the reason that the, um, on the, on the fifth floor, because they're all two-story units.
Yeah.
You don't have to have, you know, each unit has a, a single stair it down to its lower level, and then, when you exit the unit, you have two ways out of the building.
Right. Is it gonna be sprinkler, uh?
Yes, the building is fully sprinkled and fire-alarmed.
It's fully sprink- sprinkled, yeah?
Currently.
It is, but it would be, it will be, um, amended to, for the.
Residential uses.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be brought to, to code for the, for the due uses. Even the unoccupied portions of the building are currently sprinkled, but they're sprinkled in accordance with a, you know, open, unoccupied plan, so that would all be.
You're gonna have a kitchen, a new kitchen?
There'll be, each unit will have, you know, um, a kitchen and bathroom, and so, and all the sprinkler would have to be compliant with NFPA, um, uh, thirteen.
Starting that, uh, next year, Ed?
Well, we're, you know, the phase, phase one isn't really gonna be getting into the residential, um, portion of it, 'cause that's phase four, but phase one is gonna cover all the replacement of all the decks, um, and, uh.
There's the, well, there's the new building code regulation about pollination of natural gas sources.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Right?
For new residential, you mean?
Uh, for commercial.
It's a phased rollout, I don't know exactly, um.
He's existing, he's existing, he's not, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We can residential units.
With it, that's.
Or, I think that's.
Yeah, I don't think commercials, you can still burn whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, new residential, new build residential is gonna have to be electric, but who knows, you know?
Well, that's probably.
I, I don't know if it implies to all heat source either, I think it, it's mainly like cooking, right? So, you can still have a gas boiler, but, you know, I got two induction cooktops from, uh, Thidon, that are real steel, so don't complain about those, those are great, tenants love them, too. Don't say no to use them. I feel like I might have to recuse myself, because I drank too many cherry raspberries when you built the first one. So, you're adding stairs, that's gonna make it harder for me? Good times.
Good.
All right, do we need, uh, what do we need to do here?
Do you have any questions?
Okay, is, any audience? Zoom?
So, I guess the, the one question is, the idea of, uh, you know, rolling this all into one application, and maybe it's also some guidance from you, are we crossing over some different applications of Seeker here? Or, um, if we took the decks first, you know, like he's talking about phasing it, if we were to approve phase one? Is that difference than if we approved the whole?
No, the, the project's being reviewed collectively as one.
Okay.
So, you know, in, in, in total, you know, total.
From the perspective of this board?
It, it's, it's considered an unlisted.
Yeah.
It doesn't fit a type one question.
Right. And then, and even with the residential added?
Correct.
And then, okay.
They would need to add at least fifty.
Fifty units, okay.
So, I get a motion to declare our intent to act as lead agency, or, uh?
I don't think, it's unlisted, we can do uncoordinated.
Okay.
You want to declare it?
Okay, so, the proposal. Okay, so, the proposal is, anybody want to declare this proposal as unlisted under Seeker?
I'll mo- I'll make a motion to declare, uh, as unlisted under Seeker.
I will second that motion.
Your favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So I don't need to declare a negative deck for this?
No. It, it, it's uncoordinated, but we still, you still would want your own declaration to make actions.
I mean, did you get EAF yet, or?
This needs to be revised, I guess.
Doesn't need to be revised?
What are we missing?
They, they have filled out the entire EAF, twenty was left blank, it's non-common, because it typically auto-populates without lasting. Um, so it's, you know, if you could just address number twenty, we don't need to-
So you, you're still gonna need a variance, are you increasing the signage that you have now?
Well, this was something that, um, yeah, we, we saw the note about the, the, um, required revariance, but, um, we, we thought that the, each building was allowed sixty square feet, so if it's, if it's reviewed, uh, based on each building, then we're under the sixty square feet per building. That's how we looked at it, and I don't know if that's, you know, you guys are looking at it differently.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me re- reason, analyze that with Angelina.
Yep.
Um, and she's, she was the one that kind of figured that out, so.
Did you go to that, to that elevation, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're all on the same page about what we're reading as a sign? There's a mural there now, as you're all aware, that mural beyond, it would be this much smaller sign that is much smaller than the current mural that we-
Oh, the one on the north? You know, is that what you're talking about?
On the west side, at the north end, south end of the west.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Currently, currently, there's this, this, um, mural-
Right.
On the wall, but since we're gonna be putting in, um, doors on here, we're recreating a new sign that's gonna be above the, the awning here, so it'll be smaller actually than the mural, but it's just gonna be round through, um, kind of, ish. And then, so this building, that's under sixty square feet, and then there's, we looked at it, this building, and this is the sign for this building, and that's under sixty square feet, so that's how we looked at it.
So, so I, I, I tend to agree with you, um, but, and just to be sure, 'cause Angelina brought this up, um, she needs to, any square footage that's found in system front of the building as well.
Okay.
So I can get that.
I think you're probably still good, but I think it's a very good point.
So the calculation is separate for, within the river district, it's separate from the, the west side, I think you started the building, it calculated independently, correct?
Um, no, they've been taking this whole together.
So it's sixty per building, per face?
Yeah. Maximum communicative signs area, so.
But east and west are separate? I believe that we had that, wasn't it the overlay district that allows separate amount of signage on the river side?
Uh, I'd have to double check, but I would, I would probably, I would probably respond, I don't know, I would agree with your, um, with your assessment per building. So I think that, you know, when she was looking at the signs details, that's on the cover, she saw that you guys had like eighty point one square feet. So she, she gave it a glance over and that would go. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just wanna give a heads up for, you know, for the height of the new deck, it's because the red, the redways portions in the downtown two districts, um, need to be sixteen feet.
Under sixteen feet?
Needs to be sixteen feet. But, you know, like, I think that that's probably corresponds to a lot of, like, access for, uh, DPW, DPU trucks to be able to get under, there might not be, right, there might not be utility lines under there. So, um, but nevertheless, it's still like a development standard, um, so we just wanna double check that measurement.
So it's, it's a clear dimension underneath the structure?
Yeah.
And the fact that this-
Get DPU's opinion on that, 'cause they're sore lateral, but they, you know, still, we'll make sure they have access to their own.
But there's replacements in existing deck that doesn't-
No, 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 not that part, that, in addition.
Oh, okay, exactly, only the, only the northern section. North side, yeah, that's why you have that one, not in there.
Yeah, on our, on our front sheet, we listed the signs individually per, um, per site, so, um, yeah.
Well, uh, we can clean it, we can clean it up this week. We can get an answer to it all this week.
What are the historic people saying?
Oh, good, good question, yeah, so we did meet, um, last Tuesday.
Chapo, or?
No, with the, uh, historic review commission. Yeah, HRC, um, they provided four comments back, um, each, I'll read them, the applicant should make wood railing more prominent, larger wood railing, so-
They don't, they don't, that's the older one, they don't show it, that one.
Is it here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did, we did, uh, respond to that by, um, increasing the size of the wood railing.
On the decks, or on the staircase?
Yeah, the guardrails on, on the decks, yep. Um, we, we did send that to Eric as an update this morning, or, or this afternoon, so, um, and we will follow up with, um, with, uh, so this is, it, it's hard to see here, but it's a four by four, basically turned, um, forty-five degrees, so that you can't set anything on it.
What could go wrong?
I think that, he had a, he had a, I believe the original shows a five-quarter by three wood railing, so we've increased it significantly, and that, we actually appreciated that comment, that made a lot of sense. Um, the second comment was investigate alternate mullion patterns of the two-story glass addition. And, you know, we, we looked at some, uh, op- some options, um, in the office between us, and, um, but honestly, we, we really feel like this is the best, um, direction for this, um, we just feel like it would compromise the design relative to the way that the pergola structure is centered between the buildings there. So if we tried to align mullions with the facade that it's behind, we would end up having to, you know, um, make the, the entrance pergola asymmetrical to that space, and that didn't feel like a good decision from our perspective. So we would, you know, um, we did look at them, but we've decided that that's not, um, something we would wanna change, so we would, we would respond in that way, um, hoping that they can see the, uh, you know, the reasoning behind the way we're-
Were they asking for like divided light?
No, what they were asking for was, um, the, these, these vertical mullions-
Yeah.
Divide this facade here, they were wanting them to relate more to the, the windows, the windows behind.
The alignment.
The alignment, so they would want, like, in other words, for it to be, you know, aligned with those openings, or somehow related to that, and so by doing that, from our perspective, would mean that this element would have to shift, and, and that didn't make sense for, from our perspective, for the way that the, the space needs to function, and-
If I could make comment on that, we, we see that as a transparent element, and you're seeing through it to the building behind, you're-
So, yeah, the existing, you're just owning the building around it.
In my, in my historic preservation, you know-
Right.
I'm, I'm on a restoration commission, uh, in Vermont, and we would definitely argue that you don't want to try to replicate.
Yeah, you'd rather keep the original facade of the building and then-
That's right, and, and make it visible through, so that's what we've done. We did, however, and it's not, unfortunately, we have the, the non-
It is on, on printed one here.
We have the ones printed, we did change the mullion pattern on the upper-
On the connector.
Box.
Yep.
The connector on the fourth floor.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that, this is an improvement.
We added two vertical dividers on this facade here, just because it was, it didn't, it's not, um, representing like a more traditional breakdown of glazing, you know, that, that the historic building does. And the rest of everything that we are doing does, you know, have that sort of breakdown of historic, you know, um, proportions. And so this really felt like it was, it was out of place as a result of that. So we have added verticals here and on this side here to divide that up. So we think that re- also helps to respond to what they were, um, asking. The third point was further explore the design options for the pergola in the context of a larger design. And essentially, what they were sort of, you know, getting at with this pergola structure was that it was, it felt a little bit over, um, a little bit com- complex relative to the industrial, um-
Almost Asian there.
So we, we have, we actually did respond to that, and we've come up with, um, some, you know, what we feel is actually a better, um, it's just, it just gives it a little bit more of a, of a, of a heavy timber feel to the pergola structure here than what we had, um, originally, and, you know, really does kind of, um, complement the industrial complex a little bit better as a result.
So really, it's like the tails that you have there?
Yeah, it's kind of like the tails and the sizes of the members, that, you know, the sizes of the members and that.
This kind of represents more of a, a industrial warehousey.
Exactly, yeah, so we feel like we've responded to that, and we can, you know, take a look.
Can we give, uh, you sent those over today?
Yep.
Um, we, we can't, can't add those into the package and stuff like that, the staff haven't had a chance to review it.
Okay.
I just wanna put that on the record.
So how, should we?
So just send, send me over the, or if you've already sent them, then we'll, we'll add them to next, uh, the next meeting's packet.
Okay.
So that, uh, the rest of the staff.
Yep. And then the last thing was, um, last comment, applicant, applicant indicated they are working with manufacturer to customize the fixture to provide pendants and wall sconces. This has not yet been finalized, the HRC recommends the applicant, uh, further investigate the proposed light fixture and return to HRC with a finalized option for review. So we, we have a concept, um, you know, fixture that we are working with, uh, sort of a cylindrical, cylindrical, um, fixture that we would utilize for pendants and, um, and wall sconces, but we, we're hoping to work with a company to, um, customize it a little bit, so it's basically, you know, something like, like this, is what we're showing here, um, in the, in the rendering. Um, anyway, we're still in the, in the process of working with the manufacturer to see what we could come up with.
Where, where are these gonna be?
Yeah, let me, I think if you just go back to the renderings, I can point them out.
Rendering, or?
Yeah, the rendering.
Or, excuse me.
Zoom in on those renderings. Look, right there. Uh, so, for instance, so inside, so you, you can see these, these pendant fixtures here, cylinder pendants. So there's in, in the interior of the, um, of the tower structure, and then, the other way, sorry, down. Right there. So then, as you, you know, these are also gonna be hanging from the pergola structure, sort of lighting the, the access walkway from the, um, from the grade level to the entrance of the building. And then all on, along the brick facade are the pendant style, excuse me, knots style, similar fixtures that would, um, you know, be similar shape and design to the, to the pendant style fixture. But, um, as they mentioned, we didn't have anything finalized with the manufacturer specifically to be able to present, so we'll continue to work through that and, and provide documentation of that.
And, and we, it is mentioned on the, on what was given to you, that we are looking at using weathering steel, or quarton steel, um, in a variety of locations, and we are talking with this particular manufacturer, light fixture manufacturer, and they can customize their fixture styles, both in terms of the preparations and the DDL at size, and also they can do it in quarton steel, so that won't tie to-
So, like, the, the guardrail, for instance, we have the, the planter boxes and the, um, welded wire mesh and perforated metal, um, those would all be in the weathering steel, and then the rest of it would all be painted dark bronze metal. And then like the sign, for instance, would be the weathering steel. So we would like to pick up that sort of weathering steel, um, in the light fixtures as well. So that's the concept that we're working towards, have everything hundred percent.
Let me, another question, but the deck to the north on the second, the second level deck to the north?
Yeah.
Is that on the second floor of Rev Hall?
Yes.
It is, so-
The balcony level of Rev Hall.
So are you expecting to be able to go out of Rev Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, from the, from the method.
I get it.
Yep.
I get it.
For events, that can be reserved for Rev Hall.
Sure. Got it, yeah, nice.
But it has, it does have a stair down to the other decks as well.
See that, yeah. Oh, is it when they wanna escape the wedding? Is that what that's for?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you gotta runaway bride.
Um, so, where are we at?
Uh, uh, I'm just gonna give a quick update, um, the next HRC meeting falls on Veterans Day. I think we have that off, correct? Do you have Veterans Day off?
Oh, I don't know, I'm sorry. I don't keep track.
So, uh, I would say work with Angelina, because sometimes she just kind of forwards emails and things like that, they can get a lot done in that kind of chain, but, um, just something to be mindful of.
Our goal really is to be able to get the phase one construction started in the spring, which, you know, so, assuming that we can, you know, get a planning board and, and HRC approval, you know, maybe by January, the latest, we'd still be in good shape for getting our construction-
Looks like your drawings are quite a ways along.
Yeah, we are.
So we're not construction drawings yet, so.
Right, we are working on the construction drawings on the side, you know, to submit to the building permit, building department, get our building permit in time for that, yeah.
So if for any reason that you might need a variance, the next ZBA meeting that you guys would be able to get into would be the December, um, meeting, the, the first week of December, the first Wednesday of December, if you do need a variance.
What is that meeting? What's the, the, the?
The ZBA.
ZBA, every zoning board, okay.
They meet every first Wednesday of the month.
Okay, all right. But that, and you think that that would only be for, for signage? And, as you can understand it at this point?
From all I, from all I've read, from this, with the way we find it, that's, uh, you know, I like your point though, like per building, because it's a lot.
Is that clear?
Uh, we do, uh, uh, but, and then the other one might just be-
Oh, because of that?
We wanna make sure that it's sixteen feet.
Okay.
The regulations, even though I'm sure this is-
Yeah, I, I don't think it does, I mean, I think we're under, we're under sixteen, for sure.
So, if, you know-
Yeah, I just, I wanna point something out too, just about these shoreline locations, just your own knowledge, um, I can do that for the meeting.
Okay.
I can intend you just, our map, just so you have it in your head of where these, they just show up on our map where they are.
Okay, great.
But that was all I could.
Okay.
Now do I get a motion to declare the deck?
Yeah, I mean, you, you declare the action to be unlisted, if you feel, if you can issue determination, or?
We can, if you feel we have sufficient information.
So I think the only thing outstanding would be HRC with regard to whether, say, neg dac.
Uh, question twenty, I think they were gonna look into.
Right, um, but otherwise, I don't, I don't see much else here. They've got some work to do with easements and things like that, see what's underground and where they're gonna build the new deck. They should have, you got a kind of a feeling what's there already, though. There shouldn't be any problems, right?
So, you know, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem making a motion to declare a negative declaration, give it a negative, negative declaration.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion to give it a, uh, declare a negative declaration, Seeker.
Your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This past four zero.
Can consider the application complete if you wanted?
Is it? You guys have seen more of it.
Doesn't, it doesn't preclude us from asking for more documents prior to the hearing, is?
Then I'd like to make a motion to declare the application complete.
I second that motion.
Your favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then, uh, they're not gonna be ready for, you said Veterans Day, before we know whether they need a variance, or?
It's, it's a little bit, 'cause the HRC is an advisory board, so they, they kind of correspond with Angie. And applicants, Angie kind of serves as the, uh, medium.
That can go along parallel with us, or do they have to?
Yeah, you know, but-
Schedule a public hearing for December, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You could do either or, you could do November or December. If you need that variance though, then you would get in, uh, the, uh, December.
How do you guys feel about it? Do you think you can get all that together by November, or, or did you rather go through a public hearing? 'Cause you're gonna, you're probably gonna get a lot of questions at a public hearing.
I think the one thing that, uh, might take us time is the, is the sewer, um-
Yeah. Wanna do it for December? Is that okay with you guys?
December eighteenth, or?
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth, sixteenth.
Sixteenth, seven, sixteenth.
You think you could make November, I mean?
But that would be-
I mean, yeah, we, it's, it's just, December feels, is unknown with engineering.
Yeah.
You could, I mean, it's supposed, you could tentatively schedule it for November, but once the application seems complete, you have sixty-two days, uh, to get, um, back here, and if you, you're not ready by then, I mean, certainly you can agree to extend the review period with the board, we can facilitate that if that's in need that you have, um, so if you think you can be ready for November.
How quickly can you let us know what the variance is required?
If you get the information to me, then we can review that.
Hard that information.
So, that, that's just signage, is all you need for the variance?
Signing and, yeah, and the height of that.
Oh, the height, right, okay, yeah.
So the, the height, we could probably figure out pretty quick, if you need a little bit of time to get to, but it's, in theory, I did-
We don't know. I mean, I think we automate, we, we know it's less than sixteen feet, so if that means we're gonna go in for a variance for that, then I guess that's what we have to do, yeah, it's definitely lower than sixteen feet, so if that's the threshold.
I didn't know that was in the code, that's in the code?
Development intensity, guys. Um, that would be December, the ZDA meeting is December third.
Okay.
Set the public hearing for December sixteenth?
Yeah.
Sixteenth is, not quite to, it'll be all right, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to declare, uh, schedule a public hearing for December sixteenth.
Second?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye. Any negatives? Motion's passed.
It's exciting.
Thank you, thank you.
I think it looks really good.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Memories there for a lot of people, you know, keeping it going, your age investing like this is crazy. Oh, your idea?
Yeah.
No, no.
Ah.
I make a motion and, make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, second that.
Any favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, we're adjourned until-